7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February 3rd, 2025. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Fostick.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
And Ms. Gents.
Here.
Mr. Rising, will you please lead us in the pledge?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, February 24th. This evening, we have a multitude of board salutes to hear wonderful things that our students are doing. Mr. Rising.
I will start it off. Technology Center of DuPage Student of the Month. The board salutes Wobonzi Valley Senior Xavier Benito as the Technology Center of DuPage Student of the Month for December in the Fire Science Program. As a squad leader, he inspires and motivates his team to stay on task and complete their work. He was also one of the first to complete the candidate physical ability test with an impressive time of seven minutes and forty-nine seconds. Congratulations to Xavier on this stellar achievement.
Mr. Carubis.
The 2025 City of Aurora's Donna J. Williams Award. The board salutes Sylee Joshi, past leader of the Parent Diversity Advisory Council, for receiving the City of Aurora's Donna J. Williams MLK Service Award. This honor reflects her dedication to advancing equity in education and fostering meaningful collaboration within our community. Congratulations, Sylee, on this well-deserved recognition.
Ms. Fostick.
I have two tonight. Prairie Children Preschool Gold Status. The board salutes Prairie Children Preschool for earning the Accelerate Illinois Gold Circle of Quality once again. Accelerate Illinois is a statewide program that helps early learning providers focus on continuous improvement every day. The Gold Circle of Quality is given to programs that meet the highest standards in learning environments, teaching quality, administrative practices, and staff training. Congratulations to Prairie Children Preschool for their dedication to supporting their students and families. And next, District 204 students excel in the High School Robotics Tournament. The board salutes District 204 high school students and staff who participated in the robotics tournament at Niqua Valley Burkett Center on Friday, January 10th, as well as Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, Brian Giovinini, for serving as tournament organizer. Congratulations to Niqua 2360A and Matia 8995B, who captured the tournament champion awards. Wobonzi 8780A and Niqua 2360S were awarded tournament finalists. The skills champion went to Matia 8995B. Congratulations to all the robotics teams and thank you to the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for supporting the robotics tournament experience.
Ms. Gents.
I also have two. District 204 students received 2025 Martin Luther King Jr. Character Awards. The board salutes Niqua Valley sophomore Isaiah Strange, Wobonzi Valley Junior Brian Mann, and Matia Valley Senior Caleb Hoskins, who were honored during the 24th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, hosted by Aurora's Cathedral of Grace St. John African Methodist Episcopal Church. The students were recognized for their outstanding commitment to service at school and in the community. Congratulations, Isaiah, Brian, and Caleb. Wobonzi Valley Principal presented with the Agape Award. The board salutes Wobonzi Valley Principal Jason Stip for receiving the Agape Award from the Cathedral of Grace St. John African Methodist Episcopal Church. Mr. Stip was recognized for his impactful contributions to his students' lives. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you. Ms. Jane.
I also have two. First one, Wobonzi Valley Scholastic Bowl Team named Conference Champs. The board salutes the Wobonzi Valley Scholastic Bowl Team for clinching the DuPage Valley Conference Title after defeating DeKalb. The team now qualifies for regionals, which will be held on Monday, March 10th, 2025. Congratulations and good luck at the regional tournament. Indian Prairie School District Spelling B Winners. The board salutes Dhruv Kaligotla, eighth grade student from Granger Middle School, who captured the first-place title at the 2025 Indian Prairie School District Spelling B on Wednesday, January 22nd. Aparna Sarkar, sixth grade student from Still Middle School, took second place. And Shruti Ayagari, eighth grade student from Crown Middle School, won third place. Twenty-one students from all seven middle schools in the district participated in the event. The top three students in 204 will be in the county spelling B final on Thursday, February 15th in the state. Congratulations, Dhruv.
What parent that our students and staff are leaving such an impactful mission in our district, so congratulations to all. And now, we have our wonderful student representative report by Soha Pancho from Matia Valley High School. Soha.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Soha Pancho and I'm the board representative from Matia Valley High School. It's always an honor to be here with you all today. Today, I would like to start off with general updates. Our speech team has won nearly all of their tournaments so far this year. Our DECA and BPA are sending a combined sixty-two students to their state series competitions. We welcome the class of 2029 earlier this month. We have fifty-six DECA and sixteen BPA state qualifiers. We're hosting Young Hearts for Life on Tuesday, February 4th, and we just hosted our Orca's Showcase and Speech Tournament this weekend. Next, athletics. Boys bowling entered our first-ever IHSA Regional as a coop team with Niqua Valley and Wobonzi Valley. One bowler, Alex Larson, qualified for sectionals. Girls bowling finished second at the conference, and our wrestling team is entering the conference tournament, too. Lastly, fine arts. Matia Valley High School is proud to announce that four students were awarded gold keys. Nine students' works were awarded silver keys and eleven student works were awarded honorable mentions. These works will be featured on display at Downers Grove North High School this week. Gold key entries will move on to the national competition. That's a wrap for this board meeting tonight, and thank you all for having me. And as always, go Gomastics.
Thank you. So, we're really excited. We always have a school spotlight, and this evening, we are pleased to have Steps join us. Ms. Angela Williams, Ryan Loetz, Bailey Words, Sunitha Norianen, and Jennifer Perkay. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us. Thank you, board members. We're excited to be here. We were introduced already, so we are here from Steps. I am Angela Williams, and we are representing our wonderful Steps program. And we are led under the wonderful direction of Ms. Kim Maloney, who is here with us today. And she has been such an instrumental part of the success and the growth of this program, and so we are so lucky to have her. Our Steps program is a transition program for young adults, ages eighteen to twenty-two years of age, that facilitates post-school activities, including post-secondary, vocational education, integrated employment, continuing and adult education and adult services, independent living, and community participation. Our unique design of student-level pathways, starting at our Skills and Skills Plus level, which allows our young adults to go out into the world and potentially do, like, volunteer opportunities, along with maybe assisted living, then our functional and general pathways can get either part-time or full-time employment and even go on to college. These allows our students to work on and achieve goals at their ability level that can carry on into the rest of their life and when they exit into adulthood. Sunitha?
Thank you, Angie. So, the therapeutic art program is part of the SEL program from our district, and at Steps, we offer therapeutic art. And the therapeutic art program is a platform where our students get to express not just their talents, but also their thoughts and feelings. And the projects that we do are guided by the framework of SEL topics, like the importance of communication, gratitude, kindness. And the picture that you see behind is the last project that our students from the general pathway did, and the topic was the importance of following rules. And one of the important ideas that came out of the discussion was that we are all unique individuals, but we share a community. Therefore, the importance of following the rules of the setting that we are at. And the SEL is a guiding force for our therapeutic program, and the therapeutic program is not just an expression, but it's also a coping tool for our students when they are stressed. Next, Jen is going to share about our service program.
Yes. Oh, wrong way. All right, so I'm excited to share what our women-led group has entitled the Golden Eagle Self-Care Service Project. What started out as a brainstorming activity in one of our women's groups on how we can help others has now come to fruition with this project. It's been one-hundred percent student-led, from the title to the artwork, to the posters, the handouts, to the women taking on the role of talking to the students and case managers about the project, and answering questions, responding to emails. It's been incredibly empowering to these women, each in different ways. Their goal was to make thirty-five hygiene kits to be donated to DuPage Pats, which is a homeless shelter in our community. Yesterday, or not yesterday, last Friday, they collected donations and inventoried, and in their words, they crushed their goal in collecting over one thousand items. Very, it's been incredible. They not only have, they impacted the program, the program itself has benefited from this project because our teachers have taken it a step further in having lessons on the importance of helping others, on being kind. For some of our students, it's understanding what it means to be homeless and understanding that perspective. And that's just something, a positive but unexpected outcome of this project. Our program is, our projects coming to a close, this week, we will be assembling the project, and then, as a group, we will be delivering the donations on Valentine's Day. So, we're extremely proud of them, and it's just been an incredible project that we're happy to share with you all tonight. And we have one last, if not most favorite, activity that our students enjoy that Brian will be sharing about.
Yes, thank you, Jen. So, every week at Steps, we have something called Elective Friday, and it's a big hit at our school. It's different groups that the students can choose. It lasts about six weeks for each group, and though it's led by a staff member, the students use their voice to pick what group they want to be in, and then they can switch it for another time. So, we do things like go bowling, swimming, UFC gym. At the building, we'll have art club and karaoke club, restaurant club. And it's kind of, you know, talking about the SEL that Sunitha and Jen were mentioning, it's a really good way for them to kind of practice all the skills we learn all week, and it combines all the different pathways, which is unique for the teachers because we get to work with different students that we might not see every day, and it gives them an opportunity to socialize with peers, work on the independent living skills, and really gain exposure just to being out in the community and practicing different activities. And we want to thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment and compliment you guys really quick? Before you take off?
I'm writing a leaf.
And please bring this back to your staff. I mean, you know, all our staff members across the district do incredible work, and, you know, lead our kids and educate them to post-secondary or career. You know, what you guys do is, in my mind, a little bit, it's transformational and life-changing for some of these kids. You know, and the skills you're teaching them and getting them ready for the future, so please bring that back to your staff, and thank you for the work you do.
Thank you so much for that.
I wanted to share one thing in addition. Slide five, which Jen shared spoke to me so much. I'm a Girl Scout, once a Girl Scout, always a Girl Scout. And slide four, they chose Golden Eagle, and that really spoke to me because the highest award that a Girl Scout can earn is the Gold Award. And of course, people are extremely familiar with the Eagle Scout Award. So, that combination for that title is really powerful, so in your work and sharing service and helping them to understand that. So, really appreciate that combination of two of the highest awards that young people can earn. Thank you.
I'll just, I'm going to modify something that Mr. Rising said, preparing them for their futures. They're actually preparing them for now, and I appreciate that they are preparing them for now.
I don't mind you correcting me at all.
Thank you. And even if you did, I would have done it anyway. And I say that because when I am out and about, when I'm at the grocery store or other places, and I will see some of our Steps students, and they are working hard, and then, of course, they come up and say hello to me. But they are working, and we are preparing them for the now, not the future, and I'm just so pleased about what I see happening with our Steps students. So, thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
It is now time for public comment, and sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board to be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, we ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know where the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have one speaker this evening, Ms. Alicia Smith.
Hello. I'm an alumni of the district. I went to Gregory and Wobonzi. I taught in the district at Georgetown and Kendall. I live in the district. My nephews and niece currently attend Gomber Elementary School. 204 needs equity in having successful schools. Three 204 schools fall below the state average in state testing, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. When the district designed the boundaries of Georgetown, it gave them a low-income population of sixty-three percent. That is more than tripled the district average of twenty-one percent. It is also higher than the state average of fifty percent. Longwood's low-income population is fifty-eight percent, which is almost tripled the district average of twenty-one percent. Both are also higher than the state average. Then, the district created even more inequity by having three of its schools with the highest low-income percentages feed into Fisher Middle School. School districts do not have to create inequable schools that cannot meet the state testing averages. Naperville 203's low-income average is eighteen percent compared to 204's twenty-one percent. Naperville 203 does not have a single school with a low-income average that is more than double the district average, let alone triple. As a result, every single school in Naperville 203 is well above the state average in state testing. A 2016 study found that in almost all major cities, black and brown students are much more likely to attend schools where most of their peers are considered poor or low-income. Researchers have found that the single most powerful predictor of racial gaps in educational achievement is the extent to which students attend schools surrounded by other low-income students. We should not be surprised at the racial gaps in the district or at Fisher Middle School when black and brown students are in schools with high-low income percentages. The time is now to fix systemic inequities in our educational system. The needs and rights of children cannot wait. For a kindergartner at Georgetown, McCarty, or Longwood, how many years of the same trend line? If the school board and administration are committed to equity, the segregation by income needs to be fixed. If 203 can make sure that all of its students are attending successful schools, why can't 204? We deserve to be included in the district's educational excellence. We want equitable schools for Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. All of this information is available on the Illinois School Report Card online. Go online to the Illinois School Report Card and then type in the school district or school to see the information. Thank you.
We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with our superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Demming. Members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie Community, I need to start my comments with sad news. Ms. Christine Salderholm, a teacher at Hill Middle School, passed away on January 15th. She had been a teacher in our district for twenty-seven years and taught her whole career at Hill Middle School. The Hill community of staff and students and the entire Indian Prairie community is saddened by her passing. I ask that we take a quiet moment to remember Chris. Thank you. February is African-American History Month. During this month, we celebrate the contributions that African-Americans have made in our country and the world. Schools have already started their activities to celebrate this month with resources that have been shared with all of our schools. Registration is now open for our third annual Mental Health Symposium. We have more than a hundred people already registered for the event, which will take place March 8th at Matia High School with sessions for both adults and for students. You may find information on our website. This year, IPF will have an Inspire Breakfast fundraiser. It is an opportunity for people to learn about all the great things that IPF does for our students and staff. The breakfast will be held on March 18th at White Eagle Country Club from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and tickets are available. Please consider attending the event in support of IPF, and you can find information on their website. Each year, our schools, as required by the state, ask parents, staff, and students to complete the Five Essential Survey. Parents will be asked to complete the survey starting later this month. Survey results are used by the school as a data piece that is a review for the creation of the school improvement plan. In order for schools to receive results from parents, twenty percent of all parents must complete the surveys for each school. When the surveys become available, I hope all of you will take the time to complete the parent survey. Now, I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Taylor Demming.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items D through N.
Make a motion to the Board of Education, approve Consent Agenda Items D through M.
Second.
Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we move to our action items. First, we will have a presentation from Dr. Adrian Tally, Dr. Lewis Lee, and Matt Shipley regarding Vision 2030. I need a motion and second to approve Vision 2030 as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the presentation of Vision 2030.
I second.
Thank you. We welcome you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I decided to join my team down here, those who are sitting up there, and we had a conversation about it this morning, about would I join them or sit up there, and so I'm very happy. Ms. Taylor Demming, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie Community, tonight, my team and I are sharing with you Vision 2030, which is a blueprint to enhance public education through future-focused learning with shared accountability, predictable funding that has been crafted by educational leaders from across the state of Illinois. Vision 2030 continues the work of Vision 2020 that was crafted more than ten years ago. At that time, educational leaders from the five statewide organizations advocated for initiatives that would advance K-12 public education, including evidence-based funding to ensure all schools have resources needed for local educators to be able to provide a safe, rigorous, and well-rounded learning environment. Vision 2030 advances the work for the next decade with a priority on future-focused learning, what our children need to know and be able to do so that if they can adapt and excel in rapidly changing environments. Tonight, we will share the background of Vision 2030, understand future-focused learning, component in Vision 2030, gain an understanding on how the accountability system will be reformed to be more effective in measuring student results, discuss the need for predictable funding, and then hopefully have the Board of Ed pass a resolution in support of Vision 2030. We'll first start, though, with a video about Vision 2030.
Educators are preparing students to succeed in a world of constant innovation. The job a student will have in the future may not even exist today. So, what's needed to help students thrive in a world of unknowns? Vision 2030, a blueprint that prioritizes future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding to advance K through 12 public education in Illinois. Future-focused learning means giving students a head start on post-secondary success and providing them with learning environments that are safe and secure. Imagine a world where all students are introduced to emerging career fields, discover their passion early, and earn college or vocational scholarships. discover their passion early, and earn college or vocational credits in high school. That's a future where student loan debt is less of a burden and everyone graduates ready to shine. Shared accountability means redefining student success. Just like children's physical growth, academic progress does not always happen in a linear manner. Both growth and proficiency should be measured over time to see how they're really doing. Benchmark data should be shared with teachers in real time so that quick interventions can be put in place. Lastly, school districts need predictable funding. Schools need to be able to rely on receiving full funding based on the evidence-based funding model and have the flexibility to allocate restricted funding streams towards urgent life safety needs. This is Vision 2030. To learn more and express your support, visit IllinoisVision2030.com. Together, we can fulfill the promise of public education in Illinois.
So the goals of Vision 2030 are having highly effective teachers across the state, ensure that we are developing the whole child who's ready for the 21st century, restructure our accountability system, and finally, ensure we have equitable funding across the state. It is hoped that all involved with Vision 2030, that our community, our staff, and across the state will see the power in 2030 and will support these goals. Now I'll turn it to Future Focus.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. A lot of the things that you'll hear tonight, you will not be surprised to hear things that we are already doing in our district, but also some of the challenges that we've also discussed in our district and you all as school board members. Again, this Vision 2030 is about making sure that this happens with more consistency and across the entire state. The first, for priorities for future-focused learning, some of them deal with four areas. The first one is making sure, as Dr. Tally talked about, not only is the future now, but these skill sets are being done in a collaborative way across the state. We all are focused on student safety. And how do you enhance student safety to make sure that we're not only are we looking at the daily occurrences of what makes students feel safe when they come into the building, but how does that affect the whole child? Making sure that we're bringing the best and the brightest into our educated workforce is the third priority. How do we make sure that we're bringing not just the best and the brightest, but making sure that we're diversifying the needs of our teaching force to ultimately make sure that our students are receiving diverse education? And then finally, the fourth topic that I'll talk about in a little bit more detail is making sure that we are providing curriculum and instruction that gives flexibility to local school communities as a school boards to make sure that the needs and wants of what happens in our community stays with our communities. The list that I'm going to share are just highlights. For each one, some of them are ideals, some of them are policies, and some of them may sort of gravitate to both. When you look at making sure that our future-driven skills are set for more college and career exploration, one of the things that we've talked about a lot and that the state really looks at is the expansion of dual credit. So how do we not only promote more dual credit opportunities in our classrooms, but with that expansion becomes how do we make it easier for our teachers to become dual credit certified? So that's collaborating with our local colleges, our local educational partners, so that that dual credit opportunity allows students to earn those credits earlier so that they're ready and when they graduate from us, so that they have those skill sets. We also want to be able to study the impact of artificial intelligence. As I talked about, we have a task force already here, but what we don't yet have is something statewide. So looking at the effect of AI, not just in the classroom, but in education as a whole, and what generative AI will do for us as educators. Creating a task force is part of the vision 2030 to make sure that we are all collectively involved in what that looks like statewide. The second goal regarding student safety, again, I talked a little bit about already that it's not just about making sure students feel safe and supported, but that the whole child is really supported. So that really starts with advocacy for supporting the whole child throughout at the state level. The diversification of our teaching force is something that's near and dear to our district, we know, and throughout the entire state. Some of our efforts really have to make sure that some of our Grow Your Own Teacher programs, that we are able to collaborate more as a regional level. So what are some things that we're doing well? What are some things that some of our sister districts are doing well so that we can bring teachers into our entire area? We also have to make certifications a lot more flexible so that especially for people who want to enter the education workforce as a second career, so some of our alternative education pathways, they stay rigorous, but they allow for that flexibility in learning. We have fifty-seven teacher preparation programs in our state. So how do we work with them to make sure that those licensures can be done in a very robust way? And finally, that fourth goal is making sure that the curriculum, the goals, and the decisions of them remain with local communities so that local school boards have the opportunity to weigh in on what we know is best for our students, what they know is best for their communities, and being able to really advocate with local partnerships through business industries, the military, expansion of our CTE programs. These are all statewide goals. The next piece that I want to talk about is that shared accountability piece. And really, there's three goals with the shared accountability piece. The first one is looking at our assessments, making sure that our assessment system is not only very robust, but it's also delivering those unofficial results in a more timely manner, which I'll talk about very briefly. Our current accountability system for how we are actually looking at student success, proficiency versus growth, and then finally, everyone's favorite word, mandates, right? Looking at mandates that are optional and those that are essential. So very quickly, we need results from assessments, unofficial results in a more timely manner, and that's one of the goals of Vision 2030. Give them to the district so that they can make immediate improvements, study what those are, and then start to look at ways to improve. Norming some of the national benchmarks to our state benchmarks to make sure that when we're talking about percent growth, that whether it be at the state level or the national level, it's making sense to both state officials and then also how we look on a national scale. And then finally, proficiency versus growth. Making sure that when we're talking about growth percentages and proficiency, that we're accurately measuring what both of those look like. The next piece about really looking at the accountability system to making sure that we weigh growth and proficiency differently. You know, when we're looking at student growth, and while proficiency will represent different constructs of student learning, we need to make sure that proficient students who are meeting or exceeding expectations while students below proficiency should accelerate rates of growth to achieve these proficient levels. And then finally, when we look at the mandate process, you know, this Vision 2030 really wants to look at coming up with a cohort committee that redefines what are essential mandates versus those that are going to be optional. We always hear about unfunded mandates over time, every single time. So those essential mandates that are linked to federal, state, and local dollars and goals, while those are essential, leaving up to school boards to determine what are optional and what's best for our community. Speaking of funding, I'll turn it over to our CSBO, Matt Shipley, to talk about how do you fund all of this?
Yeah, so like any strategic document, it's important that we also talk about the how we're going to get this done. So I think our, Dr. Tally and Dr. Lee have talked about the what and the why, and providing the predictable funding piece is really the how. As you know, just like we have to fund our budget every year and our strategic priorities, we need a statewide level of commitment to predictable funding and sound budget practices. You'll notice kind of throughout this presentation where funding is mentioned, the word predictable is sort of repeated over and over again. And for our board members and community members who've spent many years talking about education funding at the state level, that predictability, or in many cases, the unpredictability of state funding has really been a hindrance for local districts to achieve our goals. So in the area of predictable funding, Vision 2030 really sets out four objectives. The first is to protect the integrity and funding of the evidence-based funding formula. Second is to strengthen public education through pension reforms. Third is to establish equitable statewide funding sources for capital and safety needs. And then the fourth is to enhance financial flexibility for all school districts. So just moving on to sort of how those ideals, and you know, I can kind of provide some flavors specific to our experience here at Indian Prairie on each of these. The first ideal is really to fund EBF. So as Dr. Tally mentioned, EBF was part of the Vision 2020 document presented ten years ago and is one of the major achievements of that Vision 2020. But we know that that was a commitment to fund education statewide on a gradual scale with three-hundred-and-fifty million being added to the formula each year. And so there still is a lot of progress to be made in funding EBF. And we are requesting of the state, as part of that predictability, to continue that three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar commitment. I think one thing, again, kind of relating here to Indian Prairie, during the video, they showed a graph, and it showed the number of school districts funded at under seventy percent. And I think you saw that graph go down pretty significantly over the last several years as money has been added to EBF. But one of the challenges is for a district like ours that's funded around eighty-three or eighty-four percent, we really haven't seen a significant increase in state funding. So while EBF has raised the floor over the past eight or nine years, it's kept many other districts sort of flat. And certainly, we've seen our state funding percentage stagnate or actually decline over this time. So that's why it's critical that we continue to reinvest, continue to invest in EBF, continue to raise that floor, but also hopefully make money available for all districts through that state funding formula. The second ideal relates to pension reform, specifically the Tier Two model. Again, this has been a lingering issue within the state, and we maybe had a couple of years where it hasn't been an issue, but it is back. You know, kind of same day, kind of a little different flavor. This time, it's really a focus on that Tier Two issue. So we have both the funding challenge, but we also have a challenge attracting and retaining high-quality staff through that pension model. And so, you know, we're requesting through Vision 30 that the state really work on pension reform, both to ensure it's adequately funded, but also to ensure that we're doing everything we can to attract and retain the high-quality educators, that we need to carry out this vision. The third ideal related to life safety projects. This one, we can actually, for the most part, chalk off as an early win. A lot of this has already been accomplished through some legislation this summer. So it, but again, a priority to make funding for critical health and life safety projects available to school districts. So historically, you were not able to complete these projects even if they were identified, even if they were critical needs of the district, absent a referendum or some other source of funding. So there has been some changes to the law recently that do allow districts to issue bonds for critical life safety projects even if they maybe don't have the capacity to do that under a referendum or under their debt service levy. But then the fourth ideal that kind of ties to that capital need, and again, is something we felt as a district for many years, is having that consistent source of capital funding from the state level. So currently, there's no capital funding that comes through evidence-based funding. There's no recurring source of capital funding that's coming from the state. And so part of the predictable funding idea would be to make some level of capital funding available through the state. One of the ideas that are proposals that's included in this is the idea of a school facility sales tax. This currently exists in fifty-five counties in the state, primarily downstate districts and some of the districts that have some of our large university and college systems. So this has been a great benefit. We've seen it work well for districts in those counties. And so the proposal that's included in Vision 2030 is to look at expanding this possibly statewide, possibly making a portion of that sales tax available for school capital needs. Again, some of the policies, I think for the most part, I already covered. Again, like some of these other areas, those ideas and policies at times blend together a little bit. But again, the goal is to find policies that guarantee predictable funding for K-12 education in Illinois.
So just a reminder, Vision 2030 has four areas of focus. Keep all students safe, have high-quality educators in front of our students, enhance post-secondary opportunities, and an improved accountability system. Our future is part of this. And remember, our future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding are really the three areas of concern within Vision 2030. And the hope is that the community, our community, every community across the state of Illinois sees this as being important and valuable. And so we ask that the Board of Education, just like other boards across the state, are signing a resolution in support of this. And we'll now take any questions.
I don't think I have any questions, anything specific, but just overall, I felt like the plan and the vision seems to align with many of the discussions we've been having at the local level here, but also at conferences at the state level. So many of the sessions I attended, and I know many of my fellow board members attended, were around the concerns around Tier Two pension funding, around predictable funding, around the proficiency rate. So it just seems to, this plan seems to address a lot of the concerns that I've been hearing, and so I was really pleased to see that. I'm also pleased with the idea of the sales tax. I had not heard about that, but I think that's a really interesting means to address some of these capital funds issues that districts are having. So anyway, I think it's very promising.
Mr. Carubus.
This looks, it's a great document. It's a great resolution. It's a great vision. What's next? What do we do with this? I want predictive funding. I want to control the mandates a little bit, so what's the next step?
I would think that the next step is not just for us having the conversation with our legislators, but the community having that conversation with the legislators. This really has to be a grassroots. This is something that everyone who's listening, those people who may pick this up in something they read in the newspaper, they have to see this as being important, and they have to have these conversations with the legislators. Because if it's just us, I don't think it will happen, but it has to be everyone having that, moving it forward. Because to your point, it could die here, but that's not what we want. It has to go forward. That's what I would say.
So is the plan for us to do something intentionally locally? Obviously, this is step one. And, but I would like to have a plan developed where we do reach out to our communities with our communications, with our PTAs, and with our news sources to, you know, not throw a twenty-four-page document onto somebody, but say, you know, the flavor of the week for this vision is mandates. And so we can do our part with education and, you know, empower people with knowledge so that they can have the discussion and then advocate as well. So I'd like to be, I'd like for our plan to be intentional with moving this forward because it's all important stuff. But I want to make it so that when we're on Vision 2035, we could just, you know, we're done with this. We got them all.
Ms. Fosdick? Thank you, Ms. Fosdick.
So my only question is, and I guess it builds a little bit on what Mr. Carubus said. When should we expect to come back to this issue here? Would this just be, we will discuss this as it unfolds? Or is there a point at which in the future we can look forward to coming back and discussing what progress has been made locally? what progress has been made locally and what progress still needs to be made? So, how long can we expect until we come back and have that discussion? Do we have an idea of that timeline yet?
So, I don't think there's an idea of that timeline, and I'll say it from this standpoint. As Ms. Jane was saying, there are some things that we've been discussing all along. I know there have been many board meetings where we've talked about the issue of funding. We've talked about the whole thing regarding the fact that we're, you know, a Tier Two district and how that impacts us and the fact that we have to go and get more funding. Mr. Rising has talked multiple times about the accountability measures and how it is not the most accurate way to measure reading proficiency and math proficiency. So, we're having some of this as a board now. I think it makes sense, though, to your point, to talk about where are we as a district and the state, and probably yearly increments as to where we are.
I just want to ensure that it's not something we sign as a resolution and then disappear until 2035.
Yeah, I would just add, I think one of the pieces that's in the accountability piece is the revision of the ranking system. So, I would hope that in October, we would see a change to the top 10% and what that looks like because that's spelled out in the document, so.
Thank you.
I think much like we do with some of our presentations that reference board policy and strategic plan, maybe this would also be a place where we can reference the vision. So, if we're hitting on an accountability presentation, we could say, you know, as stated in the vision, and have a slide on where we're at or where the state's at. Or that might be a way to have incremental reports rather than a large yearly one.
Mr. Rising.
So, I'm old enough to remember when we did Vision 2020. I was one of the ones that kind of contributed to that. And so, just to give you kind of some historical background, there was a lot of similar tenants happening with Vision 2020, but things have changed. I mean, a lot of things have changed. The way we assess students, our evidence-based funding, that has all changed, and that all came out of Vision 2020. And just to give you context, I mean, I think you touched on it on like the third or fourth slide. There was 1,000 people that developed this Vision 2030, you know? And from all over the state, all the way from the most southern part to the northern part, it was Illinois Association of Administrators, Illinois Association of School Board Members, Illinois Principals, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents. So, these are all people that came together that daily run or operate or oversee public schools throughout the state, that all kind of came together to have these ideas. It is my understanding with this is that once all the Boards of Education vote on it, like Dr. Tally had mentioned, I think we're up to 500 now out of 800 in some school districts that we have, that the State Board of Education is going to bring this to the governor and to all the legislators. So, I would say the first thing our plan as a board would be, was to not only inform our community, but talk to our local legislators that are going to impact this, are going to have a say in it of what takes place at the state level. And to encourage them to read over some of these things that they understand that of this is what we really need. Obviously, as Dr. Lee mentioned, these are already things that a lot of it we have worked on or have done or completed or in the process of, but these are the things that need to happen statewide, right? Without more mandates, because I have a feeling that's one of those things that won't change. But, you know, it was encouraging to hear at the state conference that legislators recognize, they've heard us about mandates, they just aren't doing anything yet. They did say that they were going to look at trying to eliminate some of the ones that were ineffective or redundant and that type of thing. But, yeah, I mean, so I think that's, and again, I support everything in here, but I think our next step is just to inform our community. You know, this kind of goes along with the message that we sent with our referendum, right? You know, as far as our funding levels. But then, I think we also need to have a plan to talk to our local legislators. You know, and then from there, we see what happens with the governor and the legislature. And I like Mr. Carrubus's idea is as we're going through and getting presentations, we align that to some of the Vision 2030 stuff in addition to our strategic plan. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I do not have any questions, and I appreciate every point that's been brought up by my fellow board members. One thing I did want to say is, as we're talking about getting the community involved, I feel like Slide 21 really does just kind of get down just to like the nitty-gritty, really, of what is important. You know, as Mr. Carrubus was saying, we don't need to go through 24 slides, although I appreciated every one. I do feel like Slide 21 is one that the community can resonate with. And that is one, like you guys were even saying, that we have been talking about for as long as I've been on the board, the two years I've been on the board, but beyond. We're constantly talking about it. So, I so appreciate you guys putting this presentation together, and I do look forward to seeing what we all do after we pass this resolution.
Matt, quick question. Can you share a little bit about the sales tax? Why is that sales tax available where it sounds like some higher education institutions are and not in other?
Sure. So, the sales tax and my understanding, it's that there are neighboring states that have the statewide sales tax solution. And this has been an opportunity at the county level for about, I think since 2007 or so. But what happens is that in order for a district to receive the sales tax revenue, it does, similar to a referendum, it goes to a vote, but it goes to a county-wide vote. And it requires all the districts in the county to sort of endorse it and bring it to the county to get it on the ballot. And so, there's no reason we couldn't pursue it in DuPage or Will County, our two counties. But the reality is what has happened is that it is, where it's been successful has been in the smaller counties downstate, counties where the school districts are maybe a little more homogeneous or similar. And then, to the point about our college towns, also to the counties where they have a lot of out-of-county sales tax revenue generated. And so, they're seen as an opportunity to collect that sales tax and impose it on our college students and people visiting for Dad's Weekend as opposed to, you know, our residential property tax holders. And so, it's something that every time it's been looked at in the collar counties has really, really been tough to get over those hurdles, to get over the hurdle of needing a significant endorsement from the school districts, getting over some of the, you know, sort of uniqueness or diversity you see in districts. We did, this board, I believe back in 2017 or 2018, did pass a resolution to try and get it on the Will County ballot. But again, we're working with districts across Will County. There were districts that, for example, there were districts that received significant money through some of the oil refineries that go through the Manuco-Julieta area. They didn't see the need, so they didn't endorse it, right? Or, you know, there were some districts that maybe didn't endorse it for other reasons, and it ultimately didn't get on the ballot. So, this is an opportunity to really, again, see something that's working in about half the counties in the state, recognize that there's some challenges adopting it in the Cook County, in the Coller County areas, and try and come up with a solution that's statewide. And again, to the point Board Member Rising brought up earlier during our referendum presentation, I mean, this was, wouldn't it have been nice if the last 10 or 15 years, we had that consistent source of capital funding? We would have been able to deal with needs as they arisen as opposed to building up a significant deferred maintenance account. And potentially, that could have been a greatly reduced referendum or maybe not even a referendum need at all, so.
Well, it's interesting that you talked about the need to coalesce that as something that could be done. I was thinking, I had mentioned to Dr. Tally today, it was, is interesting to me to see the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools on there. And so, I just wondered about LUDA and, you know, is there any, it's, Board Member Carrubus talked about, you know, the need for us to begin reaching out individually as a district. Wondered also if there's going to be that conglomeration of large unit districts or, you know, through LUDA, through Lindt and, you know, within our county to try and also have that input to our legislators as well.
I, we have a monthly meeting with LUDA. We have one coming up. I don't, just because we don't see it doesn't mean that LUDA is not in support. I have not heard them say anything against. It's just maybe that they, we didn't put them on there, but I, I don't, I have not heard of anyone being against Vision 2030.
Sure.
When we had the recently, our DuPage Superintendent's Meeting, this was something that was discussed at that meeting with, you know, more than 20 superintendents. Everyone was in agreement.
And then, finally, I just wanted to say, you know, dual credit. I'm a community college administrator, and where I am, dual credit has been extremely successful. A lot of concerns, I know sometimes from colleges within our county as to whether that's going to take money away. But we've seen a lot of success in my college in Kane County. And so, really excited for me to see this particular, this focus from the state on recognizing that students, you know, helping meet students where they are and having that opportunity to get a head start at higher education, whether they're going to move on directly into the workforce or move on to a four-year institution. So, extremely, that particular portion really spoke to me. So, I'm so excited to see that. So, thank you very much. Michelle, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fazdik?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus?
I'd just like to point out that the recommended action has the Board of Education approving Vision 203.
I changed it.
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
I.
Mr. Rising?
I would not support Vision 203. Yeah, I support Vision 203, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Carrubus, for that, for that announcement. And thank you, Ms. Michelle, for that correction. Motion passes. All right. We will now have a presentation regarding KSTEM programming. Ms. Laura Nyland, Ms. Tara Fowler, Ms. Taylor Ketteler. And thank you so much for coming and joining us this evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Tally, it's amazing that it's been a year since I've been in front of you, but I'm excited to be back and to share an update on the amazing work being done at the elementary level with STEM programming. I do have two very important colleagues with me tonight. Tara Fowler, who is the principal of White Eagle Elementary, and Taylor Ketteler, who is a teacher at White Eagle Elementary. They are going to be able to share the building perspective. We have focused on the district perspective of how we've done the rollout. Tonight, you're going to have an opportunity to hear from them how the work that we're doing at a district level and how that looks at a building level through their wonderful instructional leadership that both of them have done. So, the purpose of our presentation tonight is threefold. The first part is to just present you an overview of our progress and our key milestones that have been accomplished during our third year of the STEM initiative. We'd also like to showcase the implementation of instructional leadership strategies specific to our friends at White Eagle. And then, we're also going to take a moment or two to introduce you to a new place, up-and-coming, called Studio 204 Innovation Center. So, it stays, it's very much in line with Vision 2030. So, as a review, our five-year implementation plan for SAM Labs specifically, we initially set out to do it in three stages specifically because we knew we wanted to support the schools as best we could, and we knew we wanted to do that with about seven schools at a time. So, that's how we started off with Cohort One back in 2022, which seems like a long time ago now. And then, 2023, we brought on Cohort Two, so seven more schools. This year, we're continuing to support Cohort One and Cohort Two, and we'll talk about how we're doing that a little bit further in the presentation. And then, next year, we're looking at continued support for Cohort Two. You'll see that Cohort One is not, no longer part of, we still support them, but they are at a point where they're sustainable. And that's what we really were focusing on in the beginning of this, and we're very intentional about how we did our rollout. So, again, next year, we'll be picking up Cohort Three, our last seven schools or so. And then, we'll give them another year to really support them in-house and then get them to the level that you're about to hear from White Eagle. So, you're going to hear us talk tonight about three words, engage, equip, and empower. And these are the words that have really wrapped, we've used to wrap around everything that we do with our students and our teachers. This has been, my team, part of CNI team, our goal this year for SAM Labs, we've set one goal, and it's to increase teacher ownership in implementing SAM Labs into instruction by actively engaging, equipping, and empowering teachers and principals, ultimately enhancing student outcomes. Also, each of the school improvement plans for each of our buildings have also been aligned to SAM Labs to help principals and staff see the connections. And obviously, if they're all that, we want to be fostering a collaborative school and district culture. So, when we look at engage, what we're looking at here, when you hear me talk about engage, that is, who have we gotten in front of? Who could, how many teachers could talk to you about SAM Labs? Just that level of awareness and maybe some trying and out. That equip level is where we have teachers that are actively reaching out to our district support staff and saying, "Come on in, help me with this. Let's model it for me, co-teach it with me. All right, now let me go on my own." And that empower is where, that's where you're going to see that sustainability. So, once we're at empower, we should be able to safely feel that we can leave that building, and they will sustain the initiative on their own. Hopefully, that makes sense. So, in regards to engage, I'm going to equip, empower, I'm going to explain it in words of "I do, we do, and you do." These are teacher-friendly words on instructional coaching and supporting teachers. So, you can think of it like this. We have Liz Coletta and Latia Johnson, who you met last year. Those two are instrumental, and they are in the buildings all the time, working with teachers. Engage would be "I do." That would be a Liz or Latia or myself doing. That could be in front of staff. That could be a school-wide meeting, a SIP meeting. It could be co-planning with a grade level. But that's the initial, not quite yet to equip. Equip is the "we do." That's where you see Latia, Liz going into classrooms and working with the teacher, having conversations about who is going to be leading the lesson. What would the teacher like, what would the teacher's role be? Is the teacher the observer? Is the teacher going to be looking for something specific in that lesson? And then, that "you do" is when Liz and Latia go away, and the teacher's got it, and the teacher's on their own. So, we've done a lot of data collecting. To give you some specifics, if you were to look at our 16 schools right now that are currently in some Cohort One or Cohort Two, we are at 94% of that engaged. So, that's where we've got 94 of our teachers that are like, "Yep, I know what SAM Labs is. I could talk about it." 68% of our teachers in those 16 schools are the ones that are actively engaging with instructional coaching in some form. And then, 38% is where we're seeing teachers independently. And that word "independently," we're going to hear, you're going to hear a lot because it's not easy, and teachers love having colleagues in their classrooms, which is great. But really honing the ownership to teachers and giving them that feeling that they can do it. So, that's where we are at a district level. I also did want to point out, because this has come up from the very beginnings of SAM Labs, the connections between Portrait of a Graduate are huge. I took some pieces apart to try to connect them for you with SAM Labs, but I think I can safely say that any teacher and any student could also tell you how communication can safely say that any teacher and any student could also tell you how communication is live and well during SAM Labs, that citizenship, critical thinking, and problem solving. I know Tara could talk to a little bit more of that from the principal standpoint as well, but I'm, I'm proud to say that SAM Labs is an absolute great essential way for us to bring that Portrait of a Graduate skills alive in our classrooms. We've also gotten some survey information, and these are just some highlights for you, feedback from the classroom. Students have told us that what they love most is the hands-on learning and exploration. It's something different in their day. That creativity, collaboration, and problem solving, it is just magically constantly happening when they're engaged to SAM Labs. And we're seeing coding come to life. Coding's not that big scary word anymore, even though I don't think it's ever been scary to students, maybe just to some of us adults. They, they just get it, and what's beautiful is by using coding, they're seeing science come alive with simulations, and that to me is very powerful. Teacher highlights, you will hear over and over again that they love seeing their students engaged. I don't think we've ever had a teacher that has not said at the end of a lesson, oh my gosh, my, every one of my students were engaged, and I mean that truly. Every student finds a way to be engaged. The student inquiry experiences, you probably hear student inquiry a lot through ELA, through social studies, it's interwoven in all of our curriculum areas. This helps bring those skills alive and well, as well. Teachers have also, they would be mad if I didn't share this, that they definitely, they appreciate that support, they feel like that we're in it with them, and that's been essential, and I, I credit my team for that, they've done a wonderful job. They just need more time to build confidence. I think teachers always want to do it right. The first time, we're trying to give them that opportunity to try, and if it doesn't work out and it's a little messy, that's okay. And sometimes students can teach us more than we can teach them, so, but that's hard for teachers, I can tell you that for myself, so. Oh, oh, sorry. All right, I am going to pass it to Tara Fowler, who can speak to the building level.
Yes, so, you know, SAM Labs was kind of already underway whenever I came into White Eagle. If I'm being honest, we didn't do a ton with it last year. I think some of it probably had to do with, you know, I was learning and growing a little bit in a new role. And so we did do some professional learning, and there definitely was, I would say, a good baseline understanding of SAM Labs, but, you know, I told Laura, I said, I, I promise you, I will partner with you, just give me a minute, just give me, give me a year to kind of get some of the staff in the, in the lay of the, in the lay of the land. And so we kind of met this summer to really talk about what is it that teachers need and how can we build their capacity for SAM Labs, especially knowing that we're asking them to implement a new ELA curriculum this year too, so we want to be really mindful of that. So that's when we talked about that I do, we do, you do, with really, I would say at least part of this year being that I do, with Liz, Latia, and Laura really coming in and, and, you know, my teachers are very engaged when they're in there, but I would still say the heavy lifting is coming in that part. And really then this year, we're transitioning into more of a co-teaching, a we do, especially the second half of the year, which we'll talk about in a minute, and then to that point of the you do next year. You can go ahead and switch. So just talking about it from a principal perspective, our big goal that we came in with this year, you know, in talking with Laura, and then Taylor will talk a little bit more, but Ms. Ketteler actually did a lot with SAM Labs last year, which was great because staff got a lot of exposure to that. So we really kind of talked about what do we feel like was a reasonable goal with ELA implementation as well. And so we had set the goal that by the end of the school year, that all students in their grade-level classrooms would complete the four SAM Labs Starter Labs, which I'm super excited to report that we achieved that goal before winter break, actually. And so now, in the second half of the year, all teachers will implement at least one content-specific SAM Labs lesson that ties in with their science units that they have. And I think a lot of them will probably even take the option of incorporating a seasonal lesson, there's some really great like St. Patrick's Day lessons and things like that that kids can do. So that was our goal this year in terms of action steps. With my instructional leadership team, we actually talked last year and over the summer about implementing some committees, we already had some up and running, but we wanted to kind of shift our innovation committee to the focus being really on how can we support teachers with implementation of SAM Labs, so it's one of several committees that we have going. But these committees meet during our PLC time on Wednesdays, and we've also given some time during school improvement days or institute days where we have a chunk of time that we can devote to some of our committee work. So specifically, the focus of the innovation committee really was all about how can we teach teachers or support teachers with implementing that I do, we do, you do structure? Because really, and having been in classrooms, and I think Taylor can say this, this is not scary for kids. It is, it is scary and a little out of the comfort zone, if I'm being honest, for adults. Kids don't know any different, they've, you know, this is what they've kind of grown up around, and they're comfortable taking risks and things like that, so it's really building the capacity of the adults. The committee is led by Taylor and our LMC Director, Mrs. Viera, in strong partnership with Laura, Liz, and Latia have come on many Wednesdays and many of the days to support the team. And through the team, we provided a variety of professional learning opportunities, whether it's within that team or expanded to many of our teachers. There's been a lot of time just for that hands-on engagement with the materials, with the lessons and resources, building that familiarity. And then just giving them the team time to really sit down and come up with a plan, and we've done this with ELA too, okay, we've done this, now what's the next logical step? What's the next thing that teachers need? Let's get support, and then let's make it happen. So that's been the focus of the innovation committee. The second thing that we've done in our action steps is we've done some whole-staff PD, actually recently at our January School Improvement Day, we had a chunk of time devoted to SAM Labs, and we really kind of took an all-in approach. So we asked not just grade-level teachers, but our specials, teachers, social workers, psychologists, ELL teachers, everyone to be a part of this. And Ellie Goldstein, my student, student services coordinator, and myself, we really kind of cast like what's the why behind this with the staff. And so we really just talked about that, you know, this is new, this is scary, this is out of the comfort zone for some of us, and so we really wanted it to be that we're all in this together, we can sit down together and figure it out together and help each other. And we also really talked about what an amazing opportunity for some of our staff members that are in a support role to really, number one, get a peek into what is happening in the classrooms. We talked about how just like in Vision 2030, we're literally preparing kids in some cases for careers that don't even exist, and a lot of us have spent our whole career in education, right? Like we've never been out in some of these, in some of these fields to see some of the things that are happening, so it's a great opportunity to get a peek into what's happening in the classroom and to work together to support classroom teachers. We also talked about, you know, SAM Labs in tying in with that Portrait of a Graduate is a great opportunity for some of our providers to push into the classroom and to really support kids, but see them shine in a totally different way. And a lot of them have been in the classroom and have said, wow, like maybe the student that kind of, you know, fades into the back of the classroom is really shining and is now an expert in SAM Labs, and they're so excited. So just some of the skills, you know, if I'm a social worker, for example, pushing in, whether it's to support or maybe I'm even collecting data on a student, you can see a collaboration with peers, you can see some of those social skills in action, seeing that problem-solving, that resilience, that critical and divergent thinking. I mean, we even talked about when we're looking at kids, you know, for academic talent, like this is a hands-on way to see like how kids are thinking in a different way. And then even that language and communication, I say, I would say one of the most powerful things is the excitement. You all know at White Eagle, we have a very large ELL population, and many of our students are newcomers. And so seeing them excited about it and almost somewhat removes that language barrier because they have some background knowledge and some comfortability with this, so now they are able to engage with the materials and engage with their peers. And in fact, I had talked a little bit, because I'm a little nerdy, but I told my teachers I can't miss the opportunity, because in instructional conversations and evaluations, teachers do ask all the time, how do I get to that excellent level in evaluation, which is rigorous? And it's all about shifting ownership over to students. And so, you know, we really talked about SAM Labs, literally everything is laid out for you for all the ownership to be shifted to the students and you to be in more of that support, our facilitator role. And one of my teachers is telling me that they, and she came to me and said, do you think that we could figure it out next year if we're on evaluation cycle, the ELL teacher wants to push in so we can co-teach together? I'm like, well, we'll figure it out if this is what, you know, we'll figure it out, but it's not even, you know, it's not about evaluation, it's about this is what's good for kids. And so we have to kind of build our capacity and do what we're asking kids to do, which is to, to take risks and get comfortable being uncomfortable sometimes. And then finally, we've offered some grade-level specific professional learning. A lot of times what that looks like is just giving teachers time to, like I said, explore the content, so not only walk through the lesson as a teacher, but also experience it as though I was a student, so building the system ahead of time so that it's a little less scary, right? I kind of see like what I'm supposed to do, and maybe I have Laura there to help me, she's like, ooh, this won't connect, is this an input or an output? So to help us with that a little bit. And then finally, so we've been looking ahead to next year, our goal for next year, we really feel that our teachers will be ready to take full ownership for SAM Labs. We've talked about, you know, Taylor is a great resource in the building, our LMC Director, I am certainly not a SAM Labs expert, but we've talked about myself and Mrs. Goldstein, even if you just want another person to come in the classroom to help you and say, I have no idea how to solve this problem, but we can figure it out together, ask the kids, because they can probably solve it. So we've talked about that and just utilizing this committee next year to continue to give feedback on what's the next step and how can we support teachers so that this is successful.
Thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Taylor, who's going to give you the teacher perspective.
Well, I'm very excited and honored to share the incredible work happening at White Eagle with SAM Labs and the positive impact that it's having on both teachers and students. Through our innovation committee, we worked together to create our goal of completing those starter lessons, plus the one science content lesson. We've also worked together to plan activities to support staff to be more comfortable with the program and develop systems to efficiently manage the materials. And during the recent professional development, all the teachers were engaged in working through that science lesson, participating in it on their own independently, and really seeing their confidence grow with the coding and with the science, and having a ton of fun with it too. Some teachers who hadn't engaged with it as much were saying that they want to do it more and that they want to investigate it, you know, at home, they're like, this is really cool, this is really amazing, which has been really fantastic. I think the most important takeaway, though, is the tremendous growth and enthusiasm we're seeing from the students at White Eagle. SAM Labs has ignited excitement and motivation, helping students develop both academic and social emotional learning skills. They are actively problem-solving with Blocky, testing ideas, collaborating with classmates, and demonstrating remarkable flexibility when troubleshooting any issues that happen as they're building their systems, which is amazing. The kindergarten students that I worked with last year are now first-grade students doing lessons with me as well, and at the beginning of the year, they remembered every single problem that they solved with Blocky. I was like, how did we help Blocky last year? And they were like, well, he had melting ice cream and he didn't know how to dress for the weather, and they had, they knew every single thing that they helped him with, which was totally amazing. And the first graders I worked with last year, they're now second graders, and they have reached a very impressive level of independence with SAM Labs. One of the starter lessons has them building a stoplight, and with pretty minimal prompting, saying, hey, here are the few blocks that you might want to use to build this, you know, can you build a stoplight? They were totally able to figure it out on their own, and it was amazing. I was totally blown away by their amazing work and how confident they are exploring the systems of SAM Labs and building things. So that was really, really cool to see. Beyond coding, SAM Labs brings science concepts to life in a way that makes abstract ideas more tangible. For example, rather than simply reading about ocean currents and their effect on sea turtles, students can visualize and interact with these concepts using those SAM Labs software and hardware to create their very own sea turtle habitat. It is definitely one of my favorites, it is really, really fun. The program's visual and kinesthetic elements provide meaningful learning experiences, allowing all students to experience success and demonstrate their understanding in new ways. Students are really excited to become, you know, SAM Labs coding experts and show their classmates, help them out if they're kind of struggling with their system, and it's really great to see them collaborating and communicating with each other in that way. SAM Labs has just been a powerful way to foster curiosity and collaboration as well as critical thinking, and I've just seen a ton of growth with both our students and teachers, and I'm really excited to see how this continues to have a positive impact in the future.
Thank you, Taylor. So I hope that this has given you a good opportunity to get a feel for what SAM Labs looks like and feels like in the, in the buildings. Major kudos to these two, because you will, well, hopefully you picked up on the instructional leadership from building principal, teacher, leadership in the building, and all the processes and procedures and systems that they have in place. So you, that is why it's been so successful, and this will be good to have, because, you know, we know we can replicate it as we continue on. It's something that Taylor had mentioned that I thought was really great, is that we, when we started this, we talked about being STEM for all and having that vertical alignment, that students would be able to build on those skills, that they would be, they would see it in kindergarten, they would see it in first grade, so where they would be then by the time they head off to middle school. And Taylor mentioned it perfectly, like it is, we are being blown away by what the second graders are doing that have now had SAM Labs since kindergarten. So that's powerful as well. So with that, I'm going to introduce to you Studio 204, and it has its own slide with some gears, and the reason for that is, my hope is that I could just stand back and not say anything, and you could look at this and see, this is what Studio 204 is. We are all about every one of these gears, this is what we stand for, this is what we support, this is what we are from a district level all the way down to our students in our classroom. And we are lucky enough to have a room right now at the Perquette Center that we are using, and this was born out of a partnership with SAM Labs. They've been a great partner with us to really help us get this on the ground and up and moving. So far, we do have furniture in the classroom, that's innovative furniture that fits really great for collaborative work, can get out of the way, so those cars that you saw last year can be zooming around. And then as we continue to expand, this is going to be a great opportunity for our teachers to come together, to be in an innovative experience, like an incubator, I guess I would say, a place for them to learn and grow as well. So there's lots of things on the horizon, lots of planning to be done and programming, but first and foremost, the Studio 204, this is what it is, it encapsulates all that we stand for in District 204. So by definition, Studio 204 is a catalyst for innovation and collaboration. Studio 204 serves as a central hub for fostering creativity, experimentation, and collaboration among teachers, students, and the community. So three of our major components that we're really building on throughout our programming as we develop, first and foremost is that student-centered learning. SAM Labs, STEM innovation is all about student-centered learning. Bringing emerging technology and resources, that has been, SAM Labs has been wonderful to support that in providing even more resources to us in that space. And as I mentioned, that teacher development and collaboration, a real solid place that we can continue to grow, and this can hone, it could be a student place, a teacher place, a community member place. So that is our hope as we continue on with Studio 204. As I said, we are in the progress, so you have, you can see the room in that top picture, and right now, we have the furniture, as I mentioned. So we have room updates that I'm working with Facilities and Operations Department. Our branding and logo design is in the works, and Communications Department is helping us with that. We have been lucky enough to work with a student at the high school level that is taking interior design as an independent study course right now, because who better to get insights of what a classroom should look like than to ask a student? So I have met with her, she is now my client, and I've been super impressed by the questions she's asking. She is going to provide us with design concepts for color choices of the room, and has asked for a user group to get together of elementary students, because she felt that her color choices of a high school would probably be different than an elementary. So I thought that was great, that she was ready to, to give it, to, to build the place for who it's going to serve. And then that picture of all of us, that was beginning of the year, October maybe? This year, we put into place a STEM squad leadership team, which is made up of one grade level, one teacher from each grade level across our district, along with two PA teachers. And that, those are the people that are speaking on behalf of their fellow colleagues at that grade level. So we got together and did a whole day of brainstorming, how can we support, how can we continue to build that grade-level content support for teachers? And they will continue to be instrumental as we continue to grow with SAM Labs. We're still in the midst of coming up with some We're still in the midst of coming up with some spring and summer planning, course offering, so stay tuned for that. We are also in the midst of building lots and lots of community partnerships. Now we have space to bring people in. So I have some great opportunities ahead for us with that. Momentum Makers is a new name for a group that has already, we already see happening in our middle schools. We have students that are mentoring some of our elementary students at some of our middle school levels. And I just happened to be aware of it and it looked like a great opportunity for them to, the elementary students are learning about SAM Labs, but then they are going to teach the middle schoolers about SAM Labs. And hopefully, this will engage some of our middle schoolers in STEM that maybe haven't had an opportunity to engage in STEM before. So I think we have some great opportunities with student-to-student peer mentors as well. So next steps. Next year is going to be that true focus support for Cohort 3 and continue to do the sustainable capacity building in all ways and shapes or forms, as you've heard tonight from these two. You'll hopefully will know that here or and over again, that that principal ownership, this has always been principal-led, district-led, of course, but principal buy-in, bringing principals on when they feel they're ready, when they feel their staff is ready, has been essential and intentional on our part. And then curriculum development. And when I say curriculum development, what I'm really talking about is integration. Everything that we do with SAM Labs fits so beautifully into our already existing curriculum. We just need more time to build it in a way that's easy for teachers to not have to feel like they have to recreate it. But we see some really great connections. We already saw it with science, with the new ELA curriculum. That alignment is just beautiful. So stay tuned for some more updates with that. Makerspaces, I know you've heard a lot about Makerspaces specifically with our libraries. And we're going to continue to grow that. SAM Labs has been classroom teacher-specific, but we are looking to really engage the librarians in this as well, to really expand those opportunities for students outside of the classroom into that hub, which is their library. So stay tuned for that as well. Thank you very much for your time. Questions?
Thank you so much. Really, truly appreciate it. Ms. Gents?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to you guys as well. This presentation is very amazing, even without a demonstration this year. That's all right, you know. You three were wonderful enough. No, and I loved the perspective from all three of you because it is, it encapsulates the entire thing. The, I just had a couple of questions, just clarifying for everything. The SAM Labs, ideally, when everyone has learned it, is it going to be in every classroom? Every teacher will be doing it? Is it going to be, is it an everyday thing or is it?
As it stands today, we have three science lessons that we have integrated, SAM Labs lessons, that we've integrated into our science curriculum. So once every building is in full implementation, like at White Eagle, every classroom teacher, kindergarten through fifth, will be doing at least three science SAM Labs lessons. You'll hear, SAM Labs is very robust in its offerings, so most teachers are doing even more. But the expectation is three lessons, three SAM Labs lessons tied to science curriculum.
Okay. No, I think that's wonderful. And I do love that we will be having, you know, elementary school students teaching middle schoolers. They probably, at this point, could teach us.
Oh, yeah.
So. And I've been lucky enough to be inside schools with the Makerspaces, you know, even just a few years ago when they were just becoming popular. So I love that as you guys are moving forward with everything, you want to be kind of incorporating the LMC directors as well with that. So that was my only question. I just wanted to tell you how excited I am, though, about all of this.
We are, too.
Mr. Rising?
Slide six. So I have a question. Did we come up with this or was this something from SAM Labs with the I do, we do, you do thing?
So the I do, we do, you do is an instructional coaching, very education world term.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I thought I had heard that before.
I mean, it could be out there in the business world, too. I'm not sure. But it is, it's a way to describe that gradual release of responsibility is what it's called. So you can look at gradual release of responsibility being, from our standpoint, working with teachers gradually releasing so that they are doing it on their own. You can turn it around and it can be the same for students. So we want student-directed learning. We want students to take ownership. So it's helping teachers take that ownership of gradual release off of teacher, being teacher in front, teacher on the stage, and letting the students be the learners, being the, taking the lead in their learning.
What I love about it is it clearly defines it. And then we are using it as a measurement tool of how we're doing in the school. So it was wonderful. Now my story time. So after our presentation last year, I got so excited about when the kid brought the car out. I actually reached out to Laura with the approval of Ms. Rosenbloom and Dr. Tally. I asked if I could go see the SAM Labs in the school. Well, it just so happened that the SAM Labs executives were actually coming to our district. And they had a visiting school district that they wanted to show what we were doing in our classrooms. And I went to Frye Elementary and then I went to White Eagle and saw Ms. Ketteler. And you are amazing. You, I mean, the kids, first of all, the kids couldn't have been more excited. Like that, like they were all over. And what grade was that? That was, what, was that your, I think it was your PA?
No, it was talent development.
Talent development. I think it was.
Was it?
I want to say it was.
Second grade, first or second grade, I think.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was first grade.
You would have thought they were middle schoolers. The way they were into it, knew what they were doing. And if you go to slide eight, every single area of our portrait of a graduate, from flexibility, adaptability, creativity, innovation, communication, really resiliency, critical thinking, problem solving, it came to life in that instant. And the kids were like helping each other. They were doing it independently. They were walking around and helping their friends. If some of them just wanted to do it on their own, they were doing it on their own. I mean, it was incredible. You should have seen the SAM Lab executives. Like they were like, oh, my gosh, this is what we created. And I mean, the SAM Lab executives couldn't have been more excited. And it's no wonder because now I think they want to make us one of their flagship districts that they work with. So I just wanted to compliment you, compliment your school. If teachers are listening to this across the district, please, please, please. I mean, you will be amazed how this will engage your kids, learn from Ms. Ketteler, how to do the leading questions and get them involved and problem solving on their own. And what I just also want to thank our district administration and Dr. Tally. Because back in 2021 and 22, when the disbandment of the STEM school happened, we challenged our administration and said, what are you going to do extra for STEM-related stuff? And this is a clear example of what our administration has done and a three-year plan to bring this district wide. And I can only imagine it'll grow from there. So thank you all.
Ms. Fostick?
Thank you for the presentation and the update. I think it's really impressive that on slide seven, you give us the measurement and it seems to perfectly align with your five-year plan. Way to go. Keep it on target here. That's really exciting. I also don't know that you guys need a lot of logo and branding help for Studio 204 here. The presentation itself has it, I feel like has it written all over it. Collaborative learning is fun, both for teachers and for kids. And I do, as a teacher, love the reminder that putting ourselves in our student shoes and being learners and being vulnerable is really important to help them explore new things. So thank you for being the leaders in this and for helping to bring this to all of our students.
Ms. Chang?
I am so supportive of this program. I, too, got a chance, like Board Member Rising, a couple of years ago to visit the classroom. And it is, it's almost something that you can't describe. You just have to see and witness for yourself. I think as administrators, as educators, what we want our students to have is a curious mind about the world around them. And I can't think of a better activity than what SAM Labs and these activities do that plant that seed of curiosity and confidence at the same time, which is really, really exciting. I was, I had questions as the, when the presentation started about, okay, if on slide eight, what we're hearing from instructors or from our teachers is that, you know, they need more time to build confidence, which I can totally understand that, how do we do that with only two staff members and Laura? Right? Like 16 schools plus seven more, logistically, how do we do that? But then you beautifully gave an example of what Ms. Fowler is doing in White Eagle along with Taylor. And you're building leaders within each of these buildings. And because they know the staff and faculty so well, they're building lesson plans that meet their needs. So you kind of answered all of that, which was really fabulous. I don't know if, I don't know if that's replicated as easily in all the buildings. So I guess that would be like a unique journey for each building. Would that, would that be correct?
Yeah, I think we're studying that intentionally because we do want each of the buildings to be able to do it what works with them best. But it's, there's also that, you had your early adopters, the principals that came out. And so there's, and that's okay. Everyone is in their different places, right? So our last schools have the opportunity to look and see. They don't have to envision what it could look like. They will have role models. And I can guarantee this one's going to be on the phone with principals and principals reaching out to her. And that's great collaboration. That's how we learn best from each other. So yes, I think that that will continue to happen. This is one of our flagship buildings, I'll be honest, because of some of the already put in place instructional leadership.
Yeah, and the committees.
Yes.
And then, of course, I would imagine sharing what you all created with other buildings, should they request them and find that useful. I would imagine that happening. What I really loved was on slide 10 also, which I haven't heard as much, but it doesn't mean it wasn't happening. But the whole all-in approach with professional development, I think that's brilliant. I really do think when you're doing something so innovative, to invite everybody to be a part of it and to see, to see what's going on, that's just going to add to the excitement and understanding of our students. So I really hope that that's modeled and as, with the new rollout with the other seven schools. My last question is more about Studio 204, which I love the name. So cool. Like, oh, I'm just going to Studio 204.
That's what we want.
Yeah, it just seems like a dance studio or a music studio or something. I think that's so cool. I guess my question is, and I'm sure this is all, you know, of course, something in progress, but do you envision, like, some innovative lesson plan, you know, created and then piloted and then possibly scalable, maybe not scaled to all of our buildings? Like, how do you, how do you see this? Like, how do you envision some of these works? Okay.
I would say, off the top of my head, I think this is a great opportunity for us to really engage staff in a very holistic, all-in way so that we could support a whole classroom in there, field trip, however, and all of those all in, so not just my team, but our ELA specialists, our math specialists, everyone working together to really help support the whole child. And we could develop curriculum units that are very thematic, that are all problem-based learning, that incorporate all of the skills, not just the science that we're pushing into right now. And you can see that this is what excites teachers. But that's also, it's a lot, it takes time and it takes work. So and some teachers love being curriculum writers, some don't, and that's okay. But those that do love to be curriculum writers, let's give them the floor and let them go.
And this would be something in addition to, in addition to what our staff and our faculty are already doing, right? So this, we're definitely attracting those who are really interested in this work to try to come in and do that. And I had, and my last question, SAM Labs is helping you with, with how Studio 204 may be used in some ways?
Yeah, so they're helping us with, they've provided a lot of extra supplies and equipment for the space. They're helping with getting other community partnerships through their connections and walking the walk with us. They will provide more opportunities to come in and help support our teachers in any way that we can possibly imagine.
Fantastic. Okay, and I liked one more question. Do you, do you imagine something like SAM Labs extending into middle school and beyond? Like, do you envision it growing or is this elementary school where it's at?
I don't know. I think that there's potential for, you know, I think that vertical alignment, the more students are prepared for middle school in a STEM capacity, that will have an impact, one way or another, on what we do in our instructional technology classes or the middle school. But I can't speak for the middle school.
Yeah.
She could.
Stay tuned. Yeah, stay tuned. Okay.
But yes, I would think as we're building that capacity for students, just like everything else, stay future-focused.
I could just imagine that kindergarten, five years from now, being like, okay, what's next?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Yeah, right. Thank you so much.
Slide three. This is where you lay out your five-year plan. And we're in year three and you kind of see where we grow. We're going to expand it out to all schools. And I'm not hearing any negative. I'm hearing all the energy. I'm hearing excitement. I'm hearing positive. And so you think, like, let's just floor it. Let's just do everything at once. But that, you know, speed can be dangerous, too. You want to do it intentional so that you don't get tripped up. And so moving down to, I think resonated with me was slide 15, moving on there. We talk about sustainable capacity building, so we don't get ahead of our skis. And so a lot of energy, a lot of excitement. You did kind of a pilot. It worked. But you still want to do it intentional, do it in a sustainable way. So then it succeeds across the district and you don't have one school that wins and one school that loses. So I like, we still have the plan. I like the talk about sustainability. I think that will make it exciting and successful across the district, which is what we want to see on the board, that there's fidelity and there's some similarity, although each school is different and teachers and student population. One area that I'd be interested in is if we tie in any of our, you know, referendum projects to kind of expanding either our spaces or going deeper in our labs. You don't have to answer that. I'm dropping that here as a, out of the blue. But it's an interesting opportunity where, hey, if we're talking about, you know, the need for additional spaces, maybe there's an opportunity. Because you also mentioned, you know, field trips and busing. Well, that's got a lot of challenges when we got a 45 square mile school district. So I look forward to where it's going. I look forward to your presentation next time. Kudos. Thanks.
This was absolutely wonderful. And it's always appreciative when we have presentations and the smiles just continue to extend, both from the presentation side as well as to the receiving side. And so I thank you so much for that. I had a variety of questions, most of which got answered already. But I, following up on Board Member Jane's comment about Studio 204, like her love the name. So I would envision, would, could this possibly, if we are able to expand, you know, ultimately, who knows when, into different schools, could it look different? Probably at different, in different schools, probably not the same exact model, but maybe different.
The Studio 204 or SAM Labs?
Studio 204.
Ah, I think that it depends on the space. I think all of.
I think all of our buildings, I think it definitely, the teacher capacity, what's happening in that space can be replicated. It doesn't necessarily have to be the exact physical space, but I think that Studio 204 could be that catalyst to get that instructional innovation, that idea, and then take it back to the building.
So I saw that, as I was doing some investigation on SAM Labs, I saw that they actually do have the middle school model. And so wondering, could you share a little bit about how you see that educational opportunity from our elementary school students over to the middle school? Will the middle school students come to the elementary or will elementary school students go to the middle school? How will that transfer of knowledge happen? And I would envision that the transfer of knowledge would also kind of occur with the teachers at the same time?
Yes. I would say the now answer, you know, future answer could be different, but now, we already have a couple of buildings that are already have those mentorships. So it could be as simple as my team and I going in and working at the middle school with those students or go over to the elementary school with the middle schoolers and engage in that way. Down the line could be going to Studio 204, to a space, but we already have the student groups together. This would just be a way to be intentional in bringing SAM Labs alive.
I, were you going to say something, Dr. Tally?
I was just add, just going back just a little bit to something that was said earlier. SAM Labs was our way of looking at how to increase STEM work at the elementary level with middle schools already having something in place to address STEM. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. I, just to follow up on Board Member Rising's comment regarding the closure of the STEM school, I, this, I think this is fantastic because we've taken the opportunity to provide this exposure and knowledge to much broader spectrum than just a few students from our district. So when we think about the investment that we've made and the opportunity for this to continue to grow and creating excitement and the curiosity for students who would sometimes never think that coding or science, they would shy away from it, but creating that excitement and that hands-on opportunity and to your point, in line with some of the discussions we were having earlier, preparing students for opportunities and positions that we have no idea what those things will look like in the future, but very likely will be so very well-founded in STEM and coding opportunities. So thank you for sharing your excitement, thank you for all of the excitement that you create in our students.
Thank you.
All right. Legislative advocacy and any Board of Education updates?
Just quick on legislative advocacy. The legislature has passed like 5,000 bills, introduced 5,000 bills already. A lot of them are shell bills, they're technical. We don't as a body want to sift through all that, kind of decide what's important and not important and take positions, which is something we could do, but we rely, I think, on our organizations, Lend, Luda, to kind of filter which ones are important and which ones are going to move, so we don't have to waste our time and effort on ones that aren't even going to get out of committee. So just kind of a status update on where the Illinois is at.
Thank you, Board Member Karubis. Anyone else? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to resign.
Excuse me, can you, can you restate that, please?
Wait, what are you trying to tell us right now?
Can you restate that, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.